And the finance from the, uh, the Northfield Historic Society for you guys to peruse.
Thank you.
So thank you to Mr. Hoover for that. All right, and as you know, the mayor's not here. Um, he said he lost his voice today, so no matter what he had, he wasn't going to be that effective anyway. So he's staying home. On that note, uh, Mr. Ventura has asked for persons to wear a hat because he had a seizure, a medical procedure done. So he says it would look better in a hat with an bandage on his head, so he's not being rude or disrespectful. Uh, we talked about that.
You are going to take it off when we say the blood?
He'll take it off.
Absolutely. I already made that statement.
Yeah, it was choice on that one.
All right, so, um...
Did you have them all taken off?
The ordinance one.
More than one.
Ordinance one, 2023, that is the, um, uh, the EV truck. Does anyone hear anything from any residents? Does anyone get any feedback about that? It was mentioned in the newspaper this week. Mr. Hoover, did you hear anything? So a lot of people on that. Um, and I'm not sure, do you know if they're still ready and waiting to sell it to us as soon as...
That's what we hear, yeah.
Okay.
We're still working on trying to get the destination charge removed.
Okay. So we can, since we've heard nothing about this, we can go two and three on this, although it did appear in the newspaper like yesterday. So we could give it another week, another meeting if you guys want.
I'd wait till next meeting.
Okay. So we're just going to do a second reading on this. Just because it was in the newspaper today, and then maybe someone will have some opinions on that. Uh, resolution seven, this is the Charter Review Commission. Um, Mark had filled in the ordinance with the, uh, with Jeff's name as the council representative, and then the six people that we all chose to be on it. Um, Mark, do we have to then, do we have to declare the, it amended and all that stuff?
You can make a motion to amend to conform with the most recent copy distributed council.
Okay, so we don't have to be specific about what we're amending it to?
Name the names.
You can if you want.
You can if you want.
You don't have to.
Okay.
I don't have, I only have mine, so.
So Jan, you gotta make a motion to amend.
Update section one. The most current names.
You have...
That works.
There is a new copy. You got it.
She doesn't have it.
I don't have a new one.
I'll give you my copy.
What's the section? Is, there's a section with the names, and there's a section with Jeff's name too, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
So she'll need to...
Section one and section two.
Okay. Yeah, so if you want to read them. So I'd like to give that to third read so that we can get this commission started.
Can I keep this and give it back to him or not?
I'd like to do two and three so we can get this started, get the ball, get the pony in the water.
Never heard that word.
It's a malapropism that someone said on TV.
A what?
It's a big word.
Malapropism? Have you never heard of that? Google it. It's spelled...
I've never heard that term or the phrase you just used. Is that like an analogy?
Can I ask Mark a quick question on this?
Sure thing.
Mark, um, if, assuming this passes tonight, is the game plan for you to email everybody and feel out what date they want to meet, or do you want me to do that? How do you want to...
Um, I would probably reach out to them either by phone or by email. Make sure I have the best contact for them.
Okay.
I would send out within the next week, or probably within the next week would be my goal, um, to get the letter out to them explaining their responsibilities.
Okay.
And maybe, um, discuss meeting if you want to reach out separately and discuss meeting times.
No, I just thought we might want to mention it on the floor.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can certainly, um, do that if you'd like. I might just say that you're going to be in contact with them.
Don't let the law departments initiate the discussion.
Which I assume was the case.
Because one of them could say, "I don't have a lot of time."
Right. Sorry. Either way.
Even though they told you, yes, that could have changed their mind.
Right, right.
Hopefully, everybody confirmed with their people?
Yeah.
Okay. So we are good to go? All right, resolution nine, the Independence Bank, is that you, Mr. Barry?
Yes, that's just adding another bank. Uh, they were, well, now that interest rates are worth even looking at, you know, last year was point zero zero one percent. Now it's, now it's competitive, so, um, they were competitive when I was, uh, at Independence, and, uh, I'd like to add them just, uh, for competitiveness.
Okay, so once this isn't an agreement with them, this is just...
No, this is...
Just, uh, either you're in agreement or...
...with them, or, yeah, not change our banking or anything like that.
This is essentially tacking on an option to the ordinance you previously passed. Just has a slightly different term because this is done later than the other couple banks that charity approved.
Right.
So I, um...
Adding them to the group, I can call and ask for a CD vote.
So I'd like to do that, one, two, three, if everyone's okay with that?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Um, resolution 10, that is for Chief Golden. Um, it was suggested that we either move this to the beginning or the end of the list, um, because he has family here, you know, we can read the resolution, have people say stuff, and then let his, his family exit. And, uh, anyone else that wants to follow?
Well, he has to be here for...
He does not, he does not have to be here for the department, uh, who kind of the Yakapo, which is going to be...
Okay, all right, then why don't we move it to the front?
To the beginning?
Yeah, I agree.
Only because it's good for him, and then they go all the hallway and he...
So we're going to do resolution 10 first, and that'll be Jan and Jeff, and we'll get that on one, two, three. I'm going to read the full resolution. Mrs. Tully, this is going to be nice enough to say some things about Chief Golden.
Well, I was going to have John read it. Instead of saying read by the title, I want to have John read the whole resolution.
Can I read it?
And then I'll, then I'll say something.
Well, usually the mayor reads the whole.
No.
No?
The court of councils would read it.
Reads the whole thing?
Yeah, so, as we could say, read only through the third whereas or the fourth whereas.
Do you have the actual, was it like...
I thought the mayor only called on the resolution, proper measure.
It's with the...
If you recognize what you're talking about...
This is not a proclamation, this is a resolution.
As, as the meeting runner, it'd be within your prerogative, um, unless council votes to do it differently.
If you really feel like you want to do it, I...
I do not.
Wrong call.
In that conversation, those are the problems solved.
I was going to do it because I thought I had to, but...
It's on him.
Yes, he was perfectly willing to do it, and I said, "I'll do it," but, uh, no, it sounds good.
He's a good reader.
Yeah. We like to hear from John. Okay, so resolution 10 is going to be, it's going to stay resolution 10, we're just going to do it first. Ordinance number 11, this is the, uh, the collective bargaining for dispatchers. Um, I don't know if anyone here has any... Mark, you weren't involved on that, correct?
Uh, no, other than the updated wage, CL that you guys saw go out.
What was the change, if you don't mind?
Um, I believe the really only substantive change was to the, um, level four dispatcher change from kicking in at five years to kicking in at four years.
Okay.
Yeah, and then a wage increase of four percent and three percent.
Okay, three.
If you went through all the...
Got it.
But that, the only thing that changed from Tuesday is what I just mentioned.
Right.
Everything else is perfect.
I didn't have a chance to read that, but thank you.
So I think the mayor would be pleased if we can get this done, one, two, three, um, you know. It's been, it's done, it's ratified, let's, let's get it through and get our dispatchers settled, please. Um, and then the donation for land, can, Mark, can you speak to that?
Yeah, so I'll just talk briefly about this. The city's been in negotiations with, uh, private LLC called 9150 Group. They own property on 9150 Delhi Road, uh, the old aerosol building, as many of you know it. Uh, they had approached the city about possibly donating that property, um, to the city for municipal purposes. Uh, we've been, we've got to a point where we've reached a no, uh, donation agreement. We've had some back and forth because we have to work with the Ohio EPA because there's longstanding environmental issues on the property, which have largely been addressed, but there's some continuing obligations that the city would incur. Um, so we have some final negotiations with the donation agreement. I think that, knock on wood, or whatever this is, um, it's hopefully going to be done in the next few weeks, but it should just be first read tonight. And once I do have a copy of the donation agreement, I'll obviously circulate that to you all so you can take a look at it and, um, contact me with any questions.
We also had the estimated cost of the cleanup because in 2007 they wouldn't do it. So by law, they were sued by Summit County.
Yes and no. Um, there are various approaches that the city could take to finalizing the remediation work, and that can stem from essentially doing the bare minimum and seeing if nature takes us to course and the contaminants are naturally flushed out. Or the city could take an aggressive stance and perform site injections with essentially an oil to help, uh, expedite the breakdown of the contaminants that are in the soil. If that route is taken, that's going to be more expensive.
Yeah, well, I think we need to realize across the street are houses. That's not, so I would think that we'd want to look at, because they, they have automotive, industrial, and that they had violated the hazardous waste rules and the cessation of regulated operations. So we need this really assessed to see what needs to be done.
It's been done.
And the cost.
It's done. It's between two hun, two and 300,000.
Is that for doing the bare minimum?
That's for a 10-year period, and there's a variety of scenarios, so I can't give you a maximum of dollars.
Can you give us...
Keep in mind that, that contamination occurred decades ago, and the EPA, 9150 Group, have had extensive work and discussions to help. A lot of the remediation work is already done, long story short. So it's not a situation where the city would inherit property with a fresh spill, and all of this work needs to be done. That's not the case here.
Well, this is less than 20 years ago, so I have a concern that it was truly all taken care for, most of it. Kind of reminds me of the property, the BP property at Highland and Eighth. Kind of reminds me of the property, the BP property at Highland and Eighth, where they kept dancing around cleaning up when they sold it, or actually, I don't think they ever sold.
Can't be sold on its toll.
Yeah, and that's what makes me nervous here. If I hadn't found this online, I'd be like, "Holy crud."
Found what online?
That Summit County took them to court in 2007 and said, "You haven't done anything, and you keep saying you did," or, "You haven't met the requirements."
Yeah, I mean, I provided you guys a written explanation, I think, about a year ago on it, so you guys did have that information, just to be clear. Um, but a lot of work's been done, and the city wouldn't have, you know, your usual brownfield-type cleanup at all.
Yeah, but what I would like to see is what's been done, what's not been done, and how much it would cost, because we do have residences across the street and across the corner and other businesses. And I know the mayor's talked about, he'd like to take part of this and make it a rec center. Not if any of that's there, you don't want to do that.
Well, it wouldn't be up to us. The EPA would say, "Okay, that's something we could do."
Right, but the, but the law department has worked what the EPA is supposed to say. What needs to be done for, first of all, for it to be inhabited. Second of all, if you add it to be open for kids...
I've already had that discussion with them. We could go in tomorrow and make that exact use, no issue.
Okay, but if you could bring the dollars and what was done and what has to be done, because according to 20 years ago, they had done a squad.
It's be, it's approximately 230,000, and the city could do nothing or could do site injections, essentially, to answer your question.
You could just put the details of what they're cleaning up, because it's also good for the public to know. This was an aerosol company that worked with a lot of different products that are considered dangerous.
Yeah, maybe what I'll do is resend, uh, the prior correspondence because it's mostly outlined in that, and then if you'd like anything further, just let me know.
Because I, you know, there's, the one property is across streets for sale, but I thought it was part of the, uh, East one, so I'm not sure how they did that. It was a farmhouse and then a...
Oh, it's an empty property, it's an empty plot of land?
And it's just acreage.
Yep. All right, and that seems to be all there is for, for this agenda. Does anyone have anything else that they need to bring up? As I said, I'll be mentioning, uh, Mr. Menhart, who recently passed, and we'll all just, uh, if any, uh, if anyone wants, Jan's going to say something about, uh, Chief Golden. If anyone else wants to say anything, just, you know, catch my eyes, we're, we're going through the agenda. So you have about 15 minutes to have some...
Oh, can I talk real quick a little bit?
Absolutely.
You get the paperwork that John was kind enough to copy first for the Historical Society. I've already talked to them, they've agreed, um, if we donate, whatever the donation is, more than welcome to have a representative at the meetings. You're invited to all the meetings anyhow, but to be able to see where they're spending the donation and how it's being spent, to make sure that it's appropriate in our mind as council uses and city dollars. Um, their next meeting is February 28th at 6:30 in Northfield Center Town Hall. So we're welcome to come. Um, most of the pork that they did comes out of their own pockets. So those flowers you have, those are, Rich pays more out of his pocket. And then they just had an eighth grader from St. Barnabas who wanted to know, he's doing a local history project on Isaac Bacon, and they were able to give him everything he needed to complete his project, so they are available for kids to talk to and learn the history. It is amazing when you read, if you read the documents or when you read the document of how we started out as one. I still want to know how we started out as, finished up as four. I don't get it. And I always thought we were going back to one with the consolidation we were able to do with the fire, but I don't think Eagles would ever allow that.
People who live in townships like to live in townships. People who live in cities like to live in cities.
If you're in the township, you don't pay taxes.
Yep, there you go. Well, you can hire private...
They'd never want to come to the city. I don't want them.
All right, anything else, guys?
I'll give you, I'll give you one good reason why you want to live in a city.
You got awesome roads.
Chief, last, before you guys went on, what was the major issue?
Oh, yeah.
Water.
Thank you.
No, no fire hydrants. No fire hydrants, they had to, uh, carry water from, like, a half a mile away down...
More than a half a mile.
Hey, you still got that on Florence, they have some fire hydrants, but those people are on sub decks.
Oh, yeah, you wouldn't want that either.
The county keeps, because they have a fire hazard area, it's going to soar out, the county keeps saying, "We're going to force you," and they never have. So they just replace the one next door that's for sale. Talk about...
All right, well, we'll see you at 7:30. No pizza up there, but you're welcome to have pizza night.
Hello all and welcome to the January 26th council meeting. The time is 7:30 PM. Mr. Hoover, will you call the roll?
Ms. Brant.
Here.
Mr. Binley.
Here.
Mr. Garvis.
Here.
Ms. Tully.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
I now ask American Legion chaplain Tom O'Brien to lead us in the invitation and pledge.
With bowed heads, let us pray. Almighty God, Father of all mankind and judge over nations, we ask ye to guide our work in this meeting. We pray for those who serve the people and guard the public welfare, those civil servants who work at City Hall and throughout our community, that by thy blessing they may be enabled to discharge their duties honestly and well. We pray for our leaders, that by thy help they may provide the leadership our community has empowered them with. And we further ask your blessing upon our police chief, John Golden, enriching with a full, happy, and healthy retirement following his 33 years of service to our community. And finally, O God of mercy, we ask thy blessing and comfort for our fellow citizens who may be suffering from mental or physical disability. Cheer them and bring them thy blessing of health and happiness. Amen?
Amen.
And now, hand over heart, please join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Brien. Next comes the approval of minutes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of Thursday, January 12th, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. I just want to make a note that Councilmember Ventura will be wearing a hat today and didn't want anyone to think it's weird or disrespectful, it's just he has a medical reason to be wearing it, so I just want to give you a heads up on that. Next up is public comments. Any public comments?
No.
Any correspondence from the clerk?
No.
All right, moving on to pending our new legislation. We are going to move Resolution 10 to the beginning of the list so we can accommodate Chief Golden and his family and so you all don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Well, you can if you'd like.
You can if you'd like.
But I'd be running out the door as fast as I can. I'd make a motion to read Resolution Number 10, 2023, through the fifth whereas.
A resolution of appreciation for Police Chief John Golden of the City of Macedonia Police Department. Whereas over the past 32-plus years, John Golden has served the City of Macedonia through his work within the city's police department, starting with his employment with the city on April 30th, 1990 as a full-time classified civil service patrolman, and served in serving that position for more than eight years. And whereas Chief Golden thereafter competed through the promotional examination process and was promoted on June 1st, 1998 to the rank of sergeant within the city's police department, and served in that position for more than three years. And whereas Chief Golden, less than four years after being promoted to sergeant and after again achieving top scoring during competitive promotional examination testing, was appointed as the city's youngest chief of police on February 1st, 2002, a position in which Chief Golden has remained for more than two decades. And whereas during his tenure in the police department, Chief Golden has worked closely with the mayor's office, department heads, and various city staff to ensure that the police department provides the professional and courteous policing services that residents and businesses of the City of Macedonia have come to expect, rely on, and appreciate. And whereas Chief Golden has announced he is retiring from service in his position as the police chief effective February 3rd, 2023, in order to spend time enjoying his favorite hobbies of fishing and traveling around the country with his family.
Before I make the motion to adopt, I'd like to make a couple comments that may not be aware of. One, this is the chief who created the 12-hour shift. It used to be a rotating, floating kind of schedule, so an officer or lieutenant, anyone in the police department, really didn't know if they'd have time for their family. And going through the 12-hour shift, they knew exactly what their shift was and they knew when they could plan and spend time with their family. He also did a lot of updating on the equipment and the computers for anyone who's been here as long as I have. Okay, I remember the fire sirens to tell you that we had a problem, so it's interesting what has changed. And he also created the community policing program, which got the community involved to be able to work with the police on their issues, their questions, and has always had an open department. And if you don't have it on your phone now, he'll tell you, put Nixle on, so that you get not just police alerts, but you get the weather alerts, you get the road alerts, so that... The other day, we had an accident in the snowstorm. They closed because they took down or eliminated the traffic stop over at 8 and Highland. Well, if you didn't know that, and you go over there, you're going, now what do I do? So, it's not just been our leader, and he's going to sail off into the sunset and go fishing. I'm trying to get my husband to go with him, because they're both fishermen, and enjoy the sunshine, so you know he's going south, because he's going to go enjoy the sunshine. Can't do that here. And be able to bring home hopefully some fish. And you gotta scale them, though. My dad always brought them home for my mom to scale. You gotta do your own. And then before we also adopt this, I'd like to say that when we do adopt it, and it's official, that you are all welcome to go out in the hallway. We'll shut the doors so you can honor the chief, so we can continue the meeting, but you can actually go spend some time and laugh with them. And I know there are other council members that might want to say something. Chief, do you want to say anything?
I said my piece already, twice.
Did you want to say something?
We're gonna miss him, that's all I can say.
Chief, do you want to say anything to your Goring fans?
Well, boy, what do you say? 33 years, it's a long time. I remember where I sat at that... At that first council meeting. And it's a long time ago, but it seems like, not yesterday, but not that long ago. And it's been an adventure, the stories that we have. Yeah, it's interesting, but I guess the resolution is for me and my career, but there are so many people that got me here that I'm thankful for. My family, the troops, counselors, department heads, they're the ones who got me here. You know, Vince, Sonia, they ran the department, and they really made me look good. But they did the work, it wasn't me. And the guys on the street, the difficult job that they had. It's... I owe a lot of people a lot of things. I'm very lucky. And just thank you. Thank you. And... You know, and I'd be remiss, dispatch, I can't forget dispatchers, the greatest folks we have. You know, down in Columbus, they say Ohio State Marching Band is the best damn band in the land. Well, our dispatchers are the best damn dispatchers in the land. The job they do, they're overworked, they're underpaid, the numerous hats they wear, you don't get police or fire without going through dispatch, so I would be very remiss without mentioning dispatch. So, I don't want to miss anybody. I see John's here, thanks for coming, John. Tracy, and I saw Kim, and you know, Matt Newron's over there. You still owe me a lobster roll. You know, Mark from the Law Department, Joe Deemer, Tom Hanslack, Myra from the Prosecutor's Office, you know, aside being a just fantastic prosecutor, Myra is... She's somebody that you can turn to for guidance. She is the, like, level-headed, just... She's a wonderful person, and I relied on her numerous times, so I'm sorry if I missed anybody. Diana, John, I don't work with you that much, but Josephine's been there for the longest time. Jan, we've been around a long time. Brian, you've... Brian's been here longer than I have, but I'm here longer full-time.
I didn't have gray hair before, sir.
So, I've rambled, I apologize, I've rambled, but it's time. I'm gonna do a little fishing, as Jan said.
A little bit.
A little. And my wife has some big plans, spending some of my money. So, thank you, thank you. I appreciate everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Golden, for your service and your dedication to the city for so long. We've been lucky to have you, and it's been great working with you. Thank you very much.
Madam President, could I just add one more thing?
Absolutely, Mr. President.
After the fact, the chief spoke about all the stories, okay? And being in the public service and the law enforcement service, when he tells a story, believe it, because fact is funnier than fiction.
So now he's got time to bend everyone's ear. He'll be calling you and telling you stories. Now, we did not vote on the readings. Mark?
No, I have to make the motion.
So we do the readings?
We already did the reading.
You asked for it to be read first through fifth whereas, so it'll be the motion for first through third, that motion will pass and opposed. And I seconded it.
So before I make the motion to adopt, you now will have time to go to Playhouse Square, so when I see your wife and daughters, you should be escorting them.
You're gonna be so cultured, John.
I'd like to make a motion to pass and adopt Resolution...
We didn't do the motion to read 1 through 3. We forgot to do that.
Oh, okay. So make a motion for us to read the resolution, 1, 2, 3?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 10, 2023, for its first, second, and third reading.
Second.
Make a motion to adopt and post according to law.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution 10 passes. Thank you very much. Everyone is welcome to join Chief Golden out in the hallway for some snacks. Or not, you can stay here for the fun.
It's fun. We didn't say they could.
Sorry. You can come back in anytime, come back in.
You can sit.
Yeah, you can.
It's very exciting as our high school leader. You're gonna sit up here with us again next meeting.
We already extended the invite.
The mayor's already agreed to it. All right, we shut the doors. Yeah, has he got them? He's got them, okay. I just...
All right, back to pending a new legislation, ordinance 1.
I move to offer ordinance 1, 2023, for its second reading by title only.
Second.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Lordstown U.D. Corporation for the purchase of a 2023 Endurance CC1L pickup truck for the city's service department without the necessity of advertisement and formal bidding.
This is the second reading. We went over this during the last meeting, but just to recap, the city is interested in buying an all-electric truck for the service department, and it'll be to replace a truck that we already were planning on purchasing. We are going to go through three full readings of this, just to see if we have any input from the community. So far, we haven't heard any, so if anyone has any input, feel free to contact anyone in council, or the council clerk, or even the mayor, or the service director. So on to Resolution 7.
I'd like to offer Resolution Number 7, 2023, for its second and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution confirming the appointments to the Charter Review Commission.
I'd like to make a motion to amend Resolution Number 7, 2023, to add the names of our electors that will be serving on the Charter Review Commission for 2023. John, if you could read Section 1.
Section 1, that the council and mayor hereby appoint the following qualified electors of the City of Macedonia, Ohio, to the Charter Review Commission for 2023. There are Vincent Milianta, Paul Bender, Luis Gonzalez, Julie Nicholson, Linda Byber, Tom Dearmeyer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass and post according to law. Resolution Number 7, 2023, please.
I have... That was for the amendment.
Right. Do you want to include Mr. Garvis as the council rep as well?
Oh, sorry, but, okay, I'll make a second amendment to...
I thought it was...
For Section 2 to add Mr. Garvis as representative to the Charter Review Commission for next year.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, now make a motion to pass and adopt according to law ordinance, Resolution Number 7, 2023.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution Number 7 passes. Resolution 9.
Introduce Resolution 9, 2023, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution estimating the aggregating maximum amount of public funds to be awarded and to Independence Bank for active and interim funds.
Mr. Veras?
Thank you, Madam President. What we're doing here is adding Independence Bank to the number of banks that I can go out and get bids for CD rates, just now that the rates are actually worth seeking competitive bids from, you know, just so if you can add them, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Ventura, what's your pleasure?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 9, 2023, and post the same according to law.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 9 carries. Next is ordinance 11.
I'd like to offer ordinance 11, 2023, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency ordinance ratifying the collective bargaining agreements for police dispatchers for the years 2023, 2024, and 2025 with the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association.
Typically, the mayor would speak on this, as he's the one who is doing the bargaining with the groups, but I know he'll tell you that he's very happy to have this done. We're always happy to get all of the agreements done with all of our unions, and as the chief had pointed out, that the dispatchers are the, you know, the most important group, they'll even tell you this, that they're that important. So we're happy to have this done, and hopefully we'll get passed, and we'll have them in agreement through 2025. So, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to pass and post ordinance Number 11, 2023, according to law.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance Number 11 carries. Ordinance... Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Madam President, again, can I just add something to that? And I think the fire chief and the lieutenant from the police department will agree that the 911 dispatchers in that center are the lifeline to the residents, to the fire department, and to the police department. I believe that's the terminology we use in the business, that they are the lifeline to all of us.
Yes, they're a fantastic department, and we're very lucky to have them. And like I said, I'm glad that we can get this done, and I'm sure the mayor is very proud of the work that they have all done together. So thank you very much for passing that. Ordinance Number 12.
I move to offer ordinance Number 12 for 2023 for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for donation of the real property known as permanent parcel numbers 3... An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for donation of the real property known as permanent parcel numbers three, three dash zero, 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 one, zero, three, three dash zero, 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 one, two, and three, three dash zero, three, three, one, six.
Mr. Godetti, is there anything you'd like to say about this?
Sure, just a quick note. We discussed this at length at the work session, but this would basically be a parcel of property being donated to the city from a. Local property owner. It used to be known as the old Aerosol Building. The L L C is really no longer functioning and they thought it would be a nice thing to do for the community. The city would be looking at making some beneficial uses out of it in the future.
All right, thank you very much. And that's just on first read, so we'll get some more information as over the next few meetings. Any other motions or legislation? Okay, next is the mayor's report. As everyone may have noticed, the mayor is not here today. He is under the weather. And he wanted to make sure not to make anyone else under the weather, so he decided to stay home. My name is Jessica Brant. I am the council president, who I guess also serves as vice mayor, so there you go. Earlier today, I met with Troop Eight Eighty-Two from the Cub Scouts of North in Northfield. And they're working towards a government badge, so it was nice to talk to them before the meeting and kind of explain to them a little bit about how local government works. And how the city of Macedonia is doing. And then after that, on a sad note, I'd like to make an announcement that former council member and Macedonia resident Mike Menhart Senior has passed away. He was a city council person from nineteen ninety-two to two thousand and three. And before that, he was recognized by the city in nineteen ninety for being named Ohio's nineteen ninety Outstanding Disabled Veteran of the Year. And he was also approved by Mayor Miglerini and former council member, but not the current mayor, Nick Molnar, to be one of the first two Macedonia representatives on the newly formed JED Board in nineteen ninety-five. He also was appointed to the Charter Review Commission in two thousand and four and he served on the Civil Service Commission from two thousand and four to twenty, twenty. So as you can see, Mr. Menhart was a very important and dedicated member of this community. He also happened to be my neighbor. Very good neighbor. And and he will be be missed. And everyone, please give your thoughts and prayers to the Menhart family as they will be missing him. And the city will be missing him as well. Did you want to say anything? No, it's too hard? Yeah, yeah, he was, he was, like I said, he was a longtime member of city council and very involved in the city and Mrs. Solly worked with him for a long time, so that was definitely disappointing to hear. That's all from the mayor. I think he also would like to tell me, don't tell you, don't text and drive, keep your eyes on the road and keep safe. Next up is committee reports. I guess I'm the only committee person up here, so I will just give a quick review of the Parks and Rec Commission, a lot of what we went over. The Director Chadak will be going over today in his report. We had a recap of the Winter Fest, which was fantastic. Everyone did a a great job and and the Parks Commission was really glad to hear how everything went well. We went over the improvements that have gone on since twenty, twenty-one, since Director Chadak has been part of our department. And we also looked at the tentative schedule for the twenty, twenty-three activities, which are not set in stone, so don't ask me any dates, but there's some fun stuff coming up. So hopefully, everybody can take part in those. Our next meeting is on the third Wednesday in February, which is the fifteenth. So that'll be at six o'clock in the activity room.
The JED Committee met Monday.
Anything you want to add about the JED Committee?
Uh, we had our first meeting Monday, the twenty-third. Some of these things that we went over are the same things that we've been going over, trying to get some resolve to those. And not all of them have been resolved. I don't think any of them have really been resolved yet and. The law director has assured us that there is some resolution coming up to one or two of those items. In the near future. Another date has not been set yet for the next JED meeting.
We all have more than one this year, you think, since you have all these?
We think it's possible.
Yeah.
There, yeah, there's traditionally one that should take place before or by December, put it that way.
Okay, two a year. Thank you very much. Next on to department reports. Director Wilson?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a lot to report other than snow. It's snowing and it keeps snowing, so yeah, we are in full twenty-four hour shift mode. We're here and we plan to be here and things break and we keep fixing them. That's that's what we're doing.
Are you still working on the bathrooms at the veterans' parks?
Yeah, that's been in conversation this week, recently, yeah. We have some electrical to finish up to just to pull into the building and then finish that up. I think we're gonna contract that just based on we only have one electrician and we don't have time. It's not that much to have it done. And then we're having the partitions put up. Forget the name of the company. And then, you know, it's just basically setting fixtures and some plumbing and things like that, so it's coming together. I've sort of given them a deadline. Let's really shoot for like. End of March, April, you know, so. We'll see.
Snow comes first.
Yeah, snow comes first and then, yeah, we'd like to finish that up and do some sort of a dedication at some point, so. In the spring, so yeah, that's where we are. Other than that. Congrats to Chief Golden and and report.
Thank you. Director Jalati?
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to say congratulations to Chief Golden on his retirement. I always enjoyed working alongside the chief. And that's really all I have to say. No further report.
Good work. Director Chadak?
Thank you. I'm happy to jump in after that. I would like to also echo those same sentiments and say thank you to Chief Golden and congratulations on retirement. We all sit here grateful for the service and also jealous. We wish we could retire and go fishing. Actually, I'd go nuts going fishing. Everybody knows that. I'd have to be doing something more active. Real quick, if I could, Kyle, if you, thank you, Kyle. Kudos to Sam Edgar for putting this together. She is our marketing and special events coordinator. She does, she has a phenomenal job of getting information like this put together to really educate us and the community. We decided to take just a quick look back as we concluded twenty, twenty-two and we actually paused for a minute and thought, holy cow, how much we've done in the last two and a half years. I don't want to insult anyone's intelligence and read through this categorically here. There's just a couple of things. J V told me I'd be fired if I read it all. So actually, let me give J D some, or J V some kudos here because. There's a lot of people doing a lot of things out of panic in twenty twenty when the pandemic struck. And I came to this city in August of twenty twenty. And thanks to J V and his wise budgeting, we still had money to work with. We just paused on spending it. And ultimately, with the cooperation of a lot of staff members putting project ideas together, J V supporting us in that journey, we were able to really salvage a lot from twenty twenty. So thanks to J V for not giving up on us, just having the budgeting wherewithal to push us through and utilize the money. And in some cases, we didn't use it till twenty, twenty-one. But it was okay. We were able to get these through, so thanks to you for all your partnership with that. We have done a lot of things, as you can see from this sheet. Probably one that I look at and I'm very proud of that we did was that really difficult decision when I first got here of renovating the hot tub instead of filling it in. That was a lifesaver. You guys probably, you probably would have ran me out of town as fast as you brought me in if we filled that hot tub in. So it's it's been a beautiful asset to us. We've done a lot of great things with it. One of the other big projects was the L E D lighting throughout the building. That was another huge piece of growth for us and then also financial savings as we went. So that was just a couple of things. Obviously, if you've been in the facility, you see it does not look anything like it did in twenty twenty. That place is completely different now, total revamping. We actually had a senior come in the other day, asked for a tour of the place because she had not been in since before the pandemic. She's like, I don't even know where I'm going anymore. So we had, we were, we've been giving tours to past members because they don't even know where anything is anymore, which is a good thing. So we've done a lot of great work. Kudos to staff for having the ability to research, to create some dynamic change that serves all of the community, not just one spot within the community, so that's been a really big deal. On the docket for us moving forward. The new front desk comes in next week, so that'll be placed. Our chemical controllers come in next week as well, so those will be put into place, so a lot of good things happening there. Currently working on the trail expansion and the H VAC replacement plan. So we're excited about the future and I thank you guys for all your support along the way, whether it was approving flooring projects or or any other item that went on. Thanks to J V for all his assistance in going through this, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, and just you've done a fabulous job, you and the staff that you've put together and the staff that was existing there, and you guys are a really cohesive unit and have done a lot of great stuff. Is this gonna be published anywhere on the website?
It will be now. We've, we've had this done for a month. We just held back because we wanted to go to P R C first and then council. Sam Edgar will put this on our website. I can have it up tomorrow. Actually, no, I can't. She's off tomorrow. I will have it up next week and then it'll also, we'll post bits and pieces to social media as well.
Yeah, people would really be interested to to see that.
That was my exact question.
Okay. All right, Director Veras?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I'd like to. Duplicate people's sentiments towards the chief. I've only got to work with him for four years, but always been professional and and easy to work with. I just, you know, when I retired, I didn't get a cake.
It's because you came back right away.
We didn't have time.
You're like Tom Brady. You're crappy at that.
Next, next time you retire.
Okay.
Technically didn't happen yet. Technically didn't happen yet.
And then we've already started processing refunds for Macedonia residents for their taxes. This year's deadline is July seventeenth, which is a Monday. Usually it's the fifteenth, but the fifteenth falls on a Saturday.
People can go on the website and download the forms they need.
Yes.
All right, fantastic. And if they have any questions on how to fill it out, your number's on there. You guys are happy to help.
Yeah.
That's great. So just just a reminder to everyone, you have to file your RITA tax first before you can fill out this stuff. I mean, you can physically, you know, do it in within the same hour, but.
Yeah, they could submit it. We just can't process it until RITA processes.
You have to know those numbers from RITA before you can fill in the thing. Thank you very much. Chief Ripley?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank or welcome Dan to Northeast Ohio. He ain't in Franklin County anymore. So this is where it really snows. Mr. Menhart was a friend of the fire department, a friend of this community, and he will be greatly missed. Was a superior individual, good conversation and very sad to hear of his passing. Saturday, you were probably inconvenienced by us. We were dispatched at approximately eleven P M Friday night to a fire that was actually located in the national park off Valley View Road. We had Valley View Road closed from Chafee to Sagmoor Road from eleven o'clock Friday night until two o'clock Saturday afternoon. So that will tell you the difficulty we had with that fire. The structure was a total loss. There were no hydrants in the area and the fire had a huge head start on us. But so to explain that inconvenience for people.
Everyone was safe? No injuries?
No injuries. Family got out safe with their dog and we actually were able to save a couple of vintage vehicles for the homeowner, so he was very happy. Same sentiments toward John. I wish he was here. I had some jokes, but. They did. I was walking by the clerk of courts Tuesday and they found a ticket that was signed by Patrolman Golden. And I quickly told them they saved it because that was the only ticket he ever wrote. Now he's not here to enjoy it. So, end of report.
Thank you. Lieutenant Yakapovich?
Thank you, Madam President. You know. I wasn't sure if I could talk when John was here and. For next week, you know, his last day is next Friday and he mentioned Sonia. Well, Sonia's retiring also. I mean, both of them, you know, long time serving the city and I wish them both the best. But for next week, if anybody's interested, I have a picture of John years ago in a police car with a full head of hair. It'll be pretty, I'm gonna get it enlarged and it'll be on display at the police department in the lobby if anybody would like to come by and see it. So I I just want to wish him the best and Sonia the best because it's been great working with both of them over the years and I, you know, good luck in retirement. Also, I'm sure everybody's aware, on Sunday, we had a shoplifter. The officers went to apprehend that shoplifter and a struggle ensued, which resulted in a officer discharging his firearm and the suspect was wounded. We called in B C I to start an investigation and that investigation is ongoing. We have done a press release, but because of the nature of the investigation and it being handled by the Attorney General's office, we really don't have any other information to release, so. You know, we'll give council and the mayor's office updates as we get them and I'm sure the mayor will keep you up to date. But those aren't gonna be very often because it is being handled by an outside agency. Also, I certainly would like to offer my condolences to the Menhart family. I mean, you know, I I attend most civil service meetings and even when Mike was on council, he was just a joy to talk with, so that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Director Collins?
Thank you, President Brant. I was actually thrown off. I'm not used to being right after P D. Yeah, since last council meeting closed, thirty-two help desk tickets, major projects have been adding additional access points, some reconfiguration of the firewall. Extending phone service out to one of the service garages at the test to see if we'll have the bandwidth to handle voice back and forth. And then trying to dial in the wireless link between here and the rec center. Unfortunately, it sounds like a piece of ice hit it and. It's not aligned properly, but the company's coming out to realign it, so any of the hiccups with internet at the rec center, I apologize, but I can't get up that tower myself. And then I just want to say congratulations.
There's no one out there. Don't watch the video, I'm sure. Thank you, Director Collins. Director Godetti?
Really no report. You know, lots been said about Chief Golden tonight. The recent events, both the fire chief Ripley spoke of and the incident that Lieutenant Yakapovich just spoke of really highlights. The importance of having really good individuals in those positions, those safety force positions. Historically, the city's been blessed in the last few decades to have public employees who can serve in those roles for decades. You have Chief Ripley and Lieutenant Yakapovich here tonight as a continuing testament to the city's ability to select good employees, so. Appreciate the public, dedicated public service that the chief's provided over all these years and wish him the best in his retirement.
Fantastic. Thank you. Any unfinished business? Any new business?
I'd just like to make a comment. The Northfield Historical Society will have their next meeting on February twenty-eighth at six thirty P M. In the Northfield Center Town Hall. If you're interested, it's it's a great organization that would love to have more attendees and more representatives join them to learn the history of this community. We laugh when we talk about the fact that over here at the commons used to be a turkey farm. And most people have no idea that's what it was. So it's a great way to get involved and it goes all the way back to the beginning when the one or two gentlemen moved out to this area. And this was originally in Indian territory, so I'd invite all of you to come to that meeting. It's their organizational meeting, but they welcome the public. Thank you.
And just so people know, Northfield Historical Society does encompass Macedonia and Northfield Center and Northfield Village and Sagmoor because it used to be one thing, so. That's why, that's why the city of Macedonia does have an interest in it and residents of Macedonia can take interest in it.
Yeah, we were all Northfield.
Yeah.
Somehow we splintered. I haven't gotten that far in the history yet.
It was the turkeys. All right, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Please adjourn. Thank you very much, everyone.
Nice job.